Okay, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to ask that we remain standing for a moment of silence for the loss of Phil Bailey, a person instrumental in the history of Clinton and the clerk of the works at both the elementary school and I believe this high school as well. Thank you. This is the February 10th meeting of the Clinton School Committee. Can we start with a motion to approve the bills? Second?
Second.
Motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion on the bills? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of January 27th?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the minutes from January 27th? There being none, all those in favor? Uh, opposed?
No.
Oh, okay. Unanimous, thank you. Thank you. Do we, do we have a student rep tonight, Mr. Sarmack? Okay, alright. Anything from the PTA tonight? Anything from the special needs pack tonight? Anything from the CTA tonight?
CTA?
Yes.
Yes, please. Yep.
The PTA and the CTA, boy. Nobody here tonight, I'm up first. Well, the teachers are really excited that $1.7 million is coming to Clinton in the Student Opportunities Act. And so, you know, as, as part of teachers being a big, part of them being stakeholders in this, we have, we are planned three building base meetings to talk about what teachers see. Mike De Meyer sent out a nice survey, from his point of view. But I talked to him today and we're planning on, once we collect the teachers' thoughts on this, that we will share it with him before, you know, he gets down to the final draft and, and you. But we held our first at the elementary school the other day and they, MTA helped us with this and they were asked, you know, what would you, what would you need for your classroom? What do you think the school needs? What do you think the district needs to help us achieve, achieve the objectives in this new Student Opportunities Act? And people wrote down their thoughts and handed them into MTA. They're compiling them all, they're gonna sort them into the nine buckets. We're gonna do this for three schools and the middle school is this Wednesday and the high school is the Wednesday after. I was thrilled with the excitement and the enthusiasm. There were 37 teachers that stayed after school last Thursday to just talk about this. And when you kinda start having rich dialogue, you know, great things happen. And so, that's, that's what's happening with that. And then, the other thing is, it's great that we're not having a whole lot of snow, but the problem is with the rain, now we're getting infiltration at the middle school. So, we've had a lot of buckets in the middle school again. So, the teacher's question was, when is the roof going out to bid? That's our other big question.
I know, I know Russ is here tonight, so we might be able to dress out a little.
Good. Good, because, you know, our project Lead the Way on Friday had several spots in the ceiling with very wet tiles and buckets on the counters, a big bucket on the other, you know, at the edge of the counter and rusty type water dripping down, hitting in these plastic buckets on the shelf and then splattering onto the floor and splattering onto brand-new computer screens. And, you know, the teachers moving stuff over, but there's all these wires here, so, and then there's, I guess I was told there's a permanent now, big trash bucket that, that's just gonna live in the eighth grade hallway. There's lots of ceiling tiles out. So, I'm hearing, you know, teachers who live in town say, I raised my hand and we voted this at town meeting, when is it gonna happen? So, those are the only two things I have for you tonight.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Is there any public comment tonight?
Do you want Russ to give an update during public or do you wanna do that in like a facility subcommittee later or, I don't know if you wanna, it's up to you.
Yeah, I mean, I think it fits better under facilities.
Yep, that's fine. Alright.
It is, yeah.
Is, is there any way to turn that down?
What is it?
It's the, it's the air handler up there. I don't know. Do you wanna see?
Go get it.
Yep, let's see if they can turn it off.
Sorry, folks, if the...
That's okay, just be aware, just speak up, that's all.
Sounds good. Dr. Meyer, the floor is yours.
Alright. Alright, so the first agenda item was community engagement. This is just, you know, the section of the strategic plan we wanna revisit. So, there's not a whole lot of in-depth updates on this one. You know, we did do the welcoming environment survey last year. I would say we're still gathering data on different things. There are, particularly for the elementary school, for their sustainable improvement plan, I know Mr. Rulo has been attending like PTA meetings and those types of things to get stakeholder feedback for that as well. The, you know, two-way parent communication, one of our things is to increase media and public outreach. I think that's part of what we've been trying to do with that newsletter, which we have an update on from the marketing committee. You know, another one's talking about the diverse members for school and state councils and making sure that all state mandated committees exist. So, we do have school councils at every level. We do have our, our special education parent advisory group and we have our English learner parent advisory council as well. And I believe they met, actually I believe they met tonight before, prior to this meeting. So, that's, and that's a relatively new one. They're actually still working on developing, they're finalizing their bylaws, so. The last one I'll probably comment on tonight is just the civics opportunity. So, you know, the eighth grade town meeting, we obviously are continuing with, we think that fits perfectly into the civics curriculum and the project that that was working on. Mr. Sarmack and I met with Mr. Moisen, the department chair for this department, about the high school civics project and we're still kinda finalizing sort of what, what that can look like and, and talking about some of those components and really looking at the user-friendly like 47-page state advisory on it, so. So, that's it. I mean, I think we're continuing to make progress in that area and I'd say there's nothing earth-shattering, but we just always wanna...
I think one of the things you can mention is our new newsletter.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't even know if it's a community engagement, but the open house at the high school.
Oh, yes, that's...
That was, that was, I thought it was very well done. I came up and I thought it was a great night overall for anybody in the community or the middle schoolers to come up and go through and, and all the classrooms were open, all the teachers, it was very welcoming and really enjoyed it.
And I think every year that, who they try to catch with that event grows a little bit. It used to be very focused, eighth grade and seventh, eighth grade and middle school and now I think we really are trying to say like middle school and community.
And community, right, yeah.
I think I was actually in the, in the newsletter we sent out, which ultimately the goal is to get the newsletter more community oriented.
Right.
We're probably not there yet with the, with the, with the actual email addresses we have at this point, but we're hoping to continue to pick up new email addresses. So, the next bullet on there was just a DESE self-assessment. So, there's a couple of things here. So, in your actual, in the packet packet, there was a list of, it says 1920 district review document list. And you can see that there are 39 documents that they've requested from us, that we have been working on gathering and our building principals have been working on, we've worked on the central office, and that we have to upload all of these documents into the Dropbox for this review. Then, after that, I just wanted you to see some of the documents that we have to provide. And then, after that, sideways again, there's a, there's a draft schedule. This is just the draft from the protocol. We have one that we're starting where we've been penciling in the names and those types of things. And you'll see that there are different stakeholders that they wanna meet with, so one of them, one of those stakeholders obviously being the school committee. So, it would actually be on Thursday, no, it's gonna be Wednesday, March 18th, in the afternoon, they would be looking to try to meet with, with each of you. They will, they come with a team of six people. All of their meetings are done in a pair, so they have three groups kind of working simultaneously. So, they would probably meet with two of you, two of you and then one of you or something like that, so, so that they avoided any type of quorum. And, you know, so, I will be in touch with you about finalizing times, they're kind of flexible, so if it's better, you know, if you, if you can sneak in during the day or, you know, like at three o'clock.
I thought it said like 4:30 to 5:30.
I think that's what it says right here, but see, it says, it says 4:30, 5:30, but it says flex time to meet district needs.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, basically like if, you know, if, if you, if your job allows you to come down at four, they can probably get you done at four and get you out of here. If you work out of town or something and you want it, you can't get here till six, so someone's gotta run to six. So, they can do, right, so we can, we can schedule that as we, as we go. I did meet with the, the woman who will be kinda chairing our visit and she, so we kinda reviewed the draft schedule I put together and there's some changes that we need to make to that, but, so if you could just mark in your calendar probably that, that March, it's Wednesday, March 18th. I made sure to get the school committee interviews off of St. Patrick's Day. No, school.
That's a great accomplishment, we appreciate it.
So, and we'll, so Wednesday though, I did, I did tell her, I'm like, you're kidding me, right? You're coming to Clinton and we're the Gales and you're gonna come on the March 16th to 19th, right? So...
So, we should, should we check in with your office with a time and to see if that fits the schedule?
Yeah, so I can say, yeah, you can either send a time to Mary if you have no one that, if you know your constraints, or I can, if I don't hear from you, we'll send something out with a proposed time and you can let us know how that works.
Everybody clear on that?
Okay. So, the other thing is, in your packet, not in your packet, you have this document, which is 39 pages or something, 38 pages. This is the actual self-assessment document that we had to complete. A lot of this, there was input, you guys know, for standard one, we brought it to you guys at a meeting earlier when we started this process. Standards, I think, two and three, the curriculum instruction assessment, those ones were all, a lot of those, that data was gathered and reviewed by our curriculum and instruction subcommittee. And then, a lot of the other ones, HR, student support and financial asset management, a lot of that was done based by our administrative team, just compiling those together. So, you know, this is, this is basically our, our self-assessment. We tried to put down what we felt, like how we kinda rated ourselves. You might notice there are some other documents listed in here. So, even in addition to those 39 documents, if there's other pieces of evidence that we felt showed what we were doing in this area, we have to upload that as well. So, we have, we have a lot of evidence, so, and we have to get all this uploaded by, by Friday. So, I don't wanna, you know, we don't have to, you know, review this line by line, I don't think it's really our, our charge to do that, right? It's our self-assessment. They're gonna come and do the, the review of the district, they'll publish their findings. I just figured I would share this with you since it's what we are gonna submit on Friday as our, as our self-assessment, okay?
Any questions relative to that? Okay.
Alright, so now in your packet, the next thing you can see is budget version A. You can see it's very similar to the preliminary budget we presented last time. It has about a, you know, 2.342 increase to the, to the general fund, so the, so about a little over 2 million. So, like, like Robin had mentioned, like, yes, it's great that we're getting a chapter 70 increase of 1.7 million and right now, we're already at 2.1. So, we'll have to go ahead and, and, and look at that. The difference really between this budget and the one we presented a couple of weeks ago is instead of it just being chunked by categories, this is really more in the TMS format and it's really, it's broken out by line item. So, you can see it starts with the district, those are all the district expenses and there's a header on the pages, district one, two and three, four, then it goes by, sorry, it goes up to six or so, seven, then each school is broken out. So, there's usually about three pages, I think, a school, I think those ones are smaller. And you can go through and then it'll show you the increase in percentage. So, for example, you know, when we, like, every year we start the budget process by trying to get feedback from teachers on what they need. This year, knowing there were some things, if you look under elementary school instructional supplies, you'll see it's a 458.57, 87% increase right now. Last year it was 13,000 for instructional supplies, right now in there we have 72,658, or 653, excuse me, so that we can try to do some of those things like making sure we have the appropriate books for their classroom libraries and those types of things. So, I do think that a lot of the input that we already got from the teachers in November when we started the budget process, a lot of the work that our administrators have done, and then as we combine it with the next layer of input from the teachers and the other stakeholders through the lens of the SOA, I think we're gonna find that a lot of it will probably dovetail together pretty nicely. So, the main thing is, this is pretty much, like I said, it's just the, it's very similar to the last one, it just gives a base, it just gives it line by line. So, our goal would be, in the next iteration of the budget that you probably see in a line-by-line breakdown, would probably be our March 9th meeting, okay? So, one month from now, 'cause the February 24th is gonna sneak up on us real quick. At that meeting, what we'd like to, what I plan on probably doing is, between now and that meeting, I'll be meeting with each administrator, we're gonna review these again and part of what we're gonna do is break them out more to the, so that we can clearly identify what would constitute as Student Opportunity Act spending, right? So, for example, like I just mentioned, there was a, you know, a large increase in elementary instructional supplies. Well, that wouldn't have happened except for, we know we had the Student Opportunity Act increase, so we would have, we would pull that out and that's under one of the, one of the allowable expenses. So, our goal will be to break this out a little bit, so you have kind of the overall budget. And then, what you'll probably see is, like, when you go through it right now, any of those line items, do you have questions, like, why is this one up 30% or why is this one up, you know? I think what you would see is in the next iteration, how much of that is really earmarked for that Student Opportunity Act funds and how is that gonna tie to our Student Opportunity Act plan that we have to put together? And then, we'll kinda go from there. Alright, does that make sense? Is that okay with that? Does anyone have any major questions on that? The other big piece of information we should hopefully have by then, which will help us would be our bus bid. We did put our bus transportation out to bid, that closes on Friday, the 14th. Hopefully by then we'll have our, by our next round, we should be able to have more of an exact figure for busing instead of just a placeholder and we'll see how that impacts things.
Three-year or a year for year?
It's usually three years and then usually we bid it with two extension years, so we can actually stretch it out to five if we need to, yeah. Alright, any questions on the line item budget right now?
Questions?
I just included, oh, I didn't include anything, I just wanted to tell you, it was on here, project lead the way grants. We did get awarded two project lead the way grants recently. One was for the high school for computer science, it was about $28,000 and that'll pay for some of the kids that they need for the computer science, the computer programming class, also pay for training for teachers, so they can go take the necessary project lead the way courses over the summer, so that they can implement the curriculum. It's actually over like three years, the idea is, you know, they might only get trained in one course this year and maybe a different course the next year. The other one we got was a smaller one, it was $7,000, but it was for a launch, which is the elementary school and expansion grant for that, so we could offer more training to teachers down there, so that they can incorporate more of the project lead the way modules into some of the specials and those type of areas. The, the next budget item on here, or the next bullet on here says diversity pilot program school committee training date. So, as part of our work, we were awarded the diversity pilot program grant, which paid primarily for professional development. As part of their proposal, the idea is they wanna try to work with everybody they wanna work with. So, there's an administrative team, the administrative team will actually be having our training fairly soon, it'll be in February, at the end of February after break. And then, the teachers will be doing some training with the teachers on the half-day on May 8th around this work. And then, since they'll be in town on May 8th to do the training, they were hoping to maybe meet with the school committee the night before. So, that's, that is a Thursday, you don't need to like commit to it right now, at some point we'll need to discuss it, I think it's shorter, it's almost like just a little hour meeting and what we might even be able to do is say, I think we might have a meeting like May 11th after that, we might even be able to say, you know what, instead of the May 11th meeting, let's just do a May 7th meeting, come do the training, we'll do some general business and go from there. I'd have to look at, you know, warrants and stuff, but that's a, that's a possibility. So, I don't, I mean, it's a little bit away, but I know that can get, be a busy time of year, so if you just wanna like put that on your calendar and then, I'll probably be able to answer more questions about what it would look like and what it would entail after the administrator training at the end of the month, okay?
That, that'd be an evening kinda thing?
Yeah, the plan would be to do it, you know, at a time that would work for you guys. When I talk to them, I threw out the concept of like a five or six o'clock, something like that, you know, we could do it, you know, or 5:30 to 6:30 and then have a meeting or whatever we wanted to do.
Sounds good.
So, we could, we could figure that out. And if it's better not to do the meeting, then we don't, you know, we could just have the train, you know, just come meet for an hour and then not have to have a, an actual business meeting, it's up to you. FY20 business manager bids, so the bids were in there, actually were only, there was only one bid, it was from TMS, it was for, I believe the same amount, it was basically for the 8,000 a month, so that would continue us through the rest of the year. You know, there are stipulations in there about the different, you know, things that, that they agree to in that, about filing certain reports and providing reports and those types of things. I think we just, like I said, I think we just need to make sure that we're communicating expectations and being clear about those things, so if there's something that you need more from or if I need more from, we gotta make sure we communicate that. That was the only bid, so I don't know if the school committee is comfortable with me moving forward and accepting that bid.
Someone like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to re-up the bid or accept the bid from TMS?
I'll make the motion that the superintendent accepts the bid from TMS.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's working well.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, I think we had a little bit of obstacles to overcome, I think we're getting better, yeah.
Okay.
So, do you see this as being like within the next year or do you ever see us wanting to hire a business manager back?
I think June 1st is the, so the way that the new bid is worded, we wouldn't have to go out to bid again, we'd be able to renew the contract. I think June 1st is our renewal date for them. I think we'd probably wanna, probably reassess around April, maybe a couple, you know, 'cause that'd be a good time to post if we were interested. And at that point, we can make the decision of kinda, do we feel like we want to continue with the, in this, in this manner or not? And I think, you know, like I said, it's, I think it's difficult for me to tell, because I think right now we, you know, we walked into, we had the immediate transition, right? So, I feel like it was just a couple of weeks ago that we really got like our payroll talking to our, our accounting system in any kind of cohesive way, right? But now we have that, right? So, and we really haven't, this is like our first time going through the budget process with them and that kinda stuff. So, I think that as we go through, I think by like April, by the time we kinda have probably like a public hearing type budget and we're pretty much at that point, we'd be able to reassess and, and see where we are.
Yeah, and I think it's also super important that where there is so much transition and you're learning to figure out and find your level, like, get the foundation done.
Right.
'Cause you don't wanna go posting a job, bring someone in, that then's gonna be sort of half-understanding all the work you've already done.
Yeah.
You'd rather be able to have like, all right, I drew up these four milestones, we hit them, we now can articulate what those solutions are doing and how they talk to each other, now's a good time to go post.
Yeah.
Until then, it might be taking steps backwards, do you consider that?
Yeah, I think definitely we would, I mean, I think it's definitely the, the smart thing to do to accept the bid for the remainder of this fiscal year and I just think the question just becomes as we go forward, is it something that we feel we're getting appropriate support with it, that we wanna stay with it in future fiscal years or do we wanna go back to the, trying to have someone in-house? I think that'll be the discussion with that. Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
FY21 school calendar, so I know we had kinda that proposal with the late openings and I know people are gonna maybe kinda float that out there. I don't know if you guys got any feedback. I haven't done anything formal for feedback yet.
I did not.
I could try to do some sort of survey, if that's something you would like me to do, to push it out, or I didn't know, I just didn't know where it stood, so I just wanted to not let it linger, so I figured...
Probably leverage constant contact for that too, going out?
Alright, good.
Like as a, like as a side execution outside of the newsletter, you could probably get that up quick with, you know, minimal questions and...
Well, especially, I mean, for our, if we're more concerned about our parents and district, I could use the one call and just get it, push it out to everybody with the survey link in it, you know, tomorrow or something if we needed to. I could do a draft of the calendar and just sort of explain why, what the purpose is and just say, you know, could be a real quick three-question survey, something, you know, anybody. So, I don't, but I didn't know if you guys had gathered any feedback in, in between, so.
I think the people I talked to, like I said, love the high school, the high school that worked out fabulous and that, I mean, definitely proponent, you know...
Support of that, yeah.
Support that. Elementary school, not so much.
Okay.
Like I said, the working parents already feel bad, they can't go to things because they're working, they can't take the time off, they have to, you know, orchestrate daycare, they, or somebody to bring their kid two hours late.
Yeah.
It was just a whole...
Just too much?
Too much.
Yeah.
Element, middle school's still out, because some of them are old enough to do their own thing.
Right. Yeah, your eighth grader, you can trust for two hours, your fifth grader, yeah.
But elementary school, anyone who had a child that I spoke to in elementary was not...
Not good. But would, didn't we say they could have the option of dropping them off at the normal time?
Yeah, I think we would say we could at least...
Or that the buses would be...
They wouldn't have the buses, so if you didn't have transportation to get them there, right?
But then again, too, your child's feeling, you know, left out because they don't have a parent there at the events that are happening. And like I said, they already, some of them already have, feel left out when there's any school event, you know, they're gonna get caught.
Well, right, I mean, and the truth is, if we're doing that, the point of doing that would be to try to engage the families.
And share the cops.
Exactly, yeah, so we gotta make sure, so we just go with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so would you like me to try, would you like me to maybe just do the, do a survey and just see and if, and we can see what the feedback is and we can even propose on there a couple alternatives or something and then bring it and try to finalize, is that, is that alright?
Sure, that works.
Okay. Good. Human resource update, I don't think we have much of one.
Yeah.
I know there was an attempt to schedule a meeting, it didn't quite work out with schedules, so, yeah.
It was a conflict with it, yeah.
So, we, it was, so we weren't able to get everyone together. I know Mike and I have talked about it though and we're hoping to try to see if there's a way we can at least get, get the screening process started without even, without waiting for like a formal meeting, because we can probably get the materials out to people and start going that way. I have one.
There you go.
So, for the fire station, we did have a request from the selectmen. Basically, the board of selectmen is, is appointing a surplus property subcommittee, so they are, they're trying to look at not just the fire station, but a lot of the surplus property that the town has acquired over the years. Their goal is to try to figure out, we, as well, you can see, they're maximizing use of these buildings, right? So, and, or properties and other things that, if they're not of use, are they of value and those types of, those types of questions, get those answered. So, they, they, they've basically asked if they could, since the fire station's only been used for educational purposes, could we essentially declare it surplus and turn it over, back over to the town's jurisdiction, so that the board of selectmen could really include it in their study? So, I don't know, I mean, this, you know, I know the board of selectmen acted on this, I think they took a vote last week making this request. I know this topic has come up in the past. I talked to Mike about it and I do know that according to town bylaws, for them to like turn the property over to anyone besides the town, it would have to go to town meeting, right? So, we don't have to worry necessarily about like, they're gonna sell it to some...
Finesse.
Yeah. You don't have to worry about, you know, you don't have to worry about, 'cause I know the, that's the biggest problem, right? It's so close to the elementary school, it's got virtually no parking, it's got literally the air handling units behind it, you know, you'd be selling literally just the building to somebody. you'd be selling literally just the building to somebody. So there's really not, it's really impractical to think of it being something besides a municipal use, which I believe is why the town has kept it so long. But I think that, you know, so I don't know, you know, I know there's been some talk of maybe looking at it for things like office space in town, or for town offices, or even like the cable studio or something like that, because there's a cable studio. So those are different things, I don't know the, like I said, I have no idea what your take on this is, and...
So why don't we throw a motion out there, and then we can debate the motion. So would someone like to make a motion to...
Declare the fire station as surplus?
Declare the fire station as surplus.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion, and let's, well, we're ahead of schedule, so discussion can be what it needs to be.
I would prefer to, they can form that subcommittee, and we have facilities director, I like to know what their kind of intent is before we turn it over. I mean, to try, I know those people in this room, they've been around, that's been used for a lot of things, and to just turn it over, and then they don't know what they're going to do with it, and then it just becomes even worse than it is now. And to your point, it's right next to the school, you know, and they could auction it off down the road, I mean, there is a lot of property, but to just to say here and that, you know, I'd rather, I know that right now, I think there's only, whether there's a train, guys are renting the space in there.
Not even that, because we winterize it because of the way the heat was getting, so we had to turn the heat off and winterize it, yeah.
Yeah, if they had a...
We were, we're not.
Either way, the towns are maintaining it, whether it's the school department, the town, we're still going to, you know, it's the same tax dollars that are going into maintaining, and to just say, hey, take this over, I mean, you know, they haven't done great with the other surplus property they have, you know, and it's just, and to your point, it's going to be right next, right next to your elementary school, and then it just becomes what? So if the selectmen, if their board comes out and they say, hey, we've got a proposal to you, and tells, hey, here's what we'd like to put in there, and it works, then you go, it's okay, fine. But to just take it and then do what you want with it, they're going to inherit whatever's next door.
See, I feel, I made the motion because I felt comforted by the fact that whatever gets turned over to, it would have to go to town meeting. So we would have that, you know, the townspeople would have that say later as to what happens to that building.
Yeah.
This is, this is the second time that the selectmen have reached out to us.
That may be true, but it going to town meeting for approval for what they want is different for how we advocate for how it impacts the school. So like I would rather hear what their thoughts are, so I could potentially review to say, you know, as a board of five people, well, if those are the two options they think they're going to go with, I can, we can now put our heads together and judge how it impacts the school, versus if it goes to town floor, and we don't agree with how it could possibly impact the schools, then the votes the vote. So I don't disagree that, I mean, if it's surplus and it should go to the town, and the town can use it in a better way, all power of the town, but I think if they want that, then they should do some legwork and come back to us and say, this is kind of what we're thinking. I agree with Brittany on this one.
But also, too, the town elected, you know, us to, you know, look out for them, but, I mean, they can look out for themselves, too. If they want to know what's going to happen to that building, they should come to the town meeting and make that decision themselves, I mean...
I don't mean to laugh at you, but there's so few people coming to the town meeting.
But they, I mean, if it's something they don't want, they'll be there.
It's been used for a lot of things over the years.
It absolutely has, but I just don't think it should stay with the school, because it's, I mean, we're not using it.
Yeah.
You know, and it's just, you know, something else that's, has to be looked after, cared after, the roof, or the doors, or the, you know, maintained, you know, it's just, you know, does the town take care of it?
If we turn it over, who's going to do that?
The town.
Okay. No, I'm not laughing at it, but...
But it'll be in their budget, not this one?
But it's the same.
Same budget.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same.
Ultimately, at the end of the day.
Right, it's, it's, you know, I just, I mean, they offered that to the parks and rec years ago, and the town didn't want it, you know, I mean, now it's just become more, yeah, Parks and Rec was supposed to go in there, you know, we used it for, what Casey Gannon does, all his stuff was stored in there for years. So, you know, it's gone, you know, now, like I said, it's going to be, it'll be just left there, and how long is it going to take? And like, what we're saying is, if the town comes back, I say the town, the selectmen come back with that subboard, or the director, and say, here's what we want to put in there, then fine, we'll turn it over, but...
But are they even going to look at it if it's not in their scope of looking at things? If they're only looking at buildings that the town has as surplus, they won't, they won't include it in there.
The only thing, and I think the only thing I would say about that, that's just a little bit, if we want to look at the big picture, right, I do think at some point you need to understand that, like the perfect example is like the central office building that I'm in, right? That's a building that ultimately is going to need a lot of work pretty soon, right? And, you know, honestly, like, we've grown into that space, but you don't need all of that space, right? You use it because you have it. So it's something that, you know, potentially, there's an ability to say, well, you know, if they wanted to turn the fire station into offices, and part of those offices were going to be earmarked for the superintendent and school business offices.
Central office.
Then maybe we could look at, is there a way to do some sort of disposition of the building I'm in, that might actually be able to be sold to someone who might want to develop condos or whatever into it. But now it's not right next to the school, right? It's a little bit, it's still across the street, but it's there, but literally not, not literally like touching the school, you know. So, and I'm not saying that that's...
No, that's a good example.
So the example I would think is, I would hope that whatever committee is looking at this, is also thinking about not just any building under their jurisdiction, like, because that's a perfect example, like, we're not going to surplus that building right now that we're using, but I'd like them to think about the future of that building as they're making decisions about other buildings.
And if they were willing to craft this letter, they must have ideas. So what's wrong sharing them?
Yeah, I'm not against giving...
I'm not against it either, I just want to know.
That's the same here.
And it doesn't mean that I have to make the decision on it, but it would be interesting to know where their minds are at, because they wouldn't have crafted the letter if they didn't have some ideas.
Well, their exact wording is, the potential exists to get some benefit from the former fire station.
So I have a question. How does our, how, if, if at all, does our school department holding on to this asset, does that impact, could that impact MSBA and future statements of interest?
I don't know that it would have, because MSBA, I think what I learned this year is MSBA is going to be very, very focused on...
Very specific.
Your grade level, like where are their students, that kind of stuff, yeah, so I don't know.
So it probably doesn't factor one way or another into the way that they look at the school district in terms of viable projects to develop?
Probably not. I mean, the only way would be, and I'm literally making this up off the top of my head, if they said, we want to turn that into a fifth grade annex, and we're going to add a wing here for seven, six, seven, and eight, you know what I mean? Like that would be, and that was their middle school solution, right? That would be like the only thing, I think, where it could come into play at all, is if they were, yeah.
But what we learned, though, is we present them with what we want to do, right, and then they...
Well, we can, we can present the different...
They get accepted in or not.
Well, they're going, yeah.
But probably is a moot point with regard to that process.
I would believe so, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? So the motion on the table is to turn over the asset to, turn it back to the town. Is that fairly representative of what we... All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Three to two.
Now, so I don't know if you want to make another motion or anything, or if you're comfortable with this, we could...
So I think we should have an accompanying motion to invite the selectmen or representative to just flesh out a little bit, you know, in terms of, because I think that's, that's all that...
Right, so you'd like, some sort of motion to, to basically say, we're not opposed to it, we would just like either some update or involvement from the surplus property subcommittee, something like that.
Yeah, like, say, if they come back and tell you, you said there's something, potential or whatever, if they come back and tell you, here's kind of what our deal was, I'd, you know, and if it fits with, you know, with your location, elementary school, I wouldn't be opposed to it. I'd just like to know in advance before it turns out, and to be, you know, end up like the Legion property, and it's a bare lot.
Yeah.
You know, they'll figure it out down the line. So that's all, yeah.
So I don't, I don't think we have a motion or a second. So the motion would be to invite the selectmen, the board of selectmen and/or representatives, so maybe the town administrator, to provide a little more clarity and detail relative to this request. Motion being made by Mr. Farakas, second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? There being none, all those in favor? That one's unanimous, okay. Thank you. Do we have anything from the curriculum committee?
I don't think so, not since last meeting, we had a lot from the last meeting.
Right. Anything from safety? Can I report out on...
You want me to tell them?
Sure.
So this morning, one of the things that the safety committee had kind of been working on with the school resource officer was trying to coordinate a, visit from the state police K nine unit to kind of sweep through the schools in accordance to the policy that was crafted by our attorney and approved here, was it last year? It might have been a year and a half ago now. But I know we updated our policy to make sure that it was compliant, and the way it kind of works is they, you know, they have sort of a, they have a schedule that's a little bit hard to always predict. So we found out, I think it was literally yesterday, they called Officer Sylvester, said they could do it this morning. So the state police K nine unit came out here. It was really pretty impressive to watch them, they came through with, I think they brought six dogs, I think only five went through the building, and the sixth one just wasn't, wasn't ready to or something. And it really is like a training experience for the dogs, they had a mix of veteran dogs and younger dogs, and then if some, if a dog showed interest in something, they'd bring another dog around to kind of see if that dog showed interest. And fortunately, what they kind of said is, the younger dogs usually tend to get a little excited, and they show interest in things, and the older dogs then come, and it's like, no, there's nothing there, like. But it was, it was great, and all, all sudden, I think from the time the dogs entered the building to the time they left, I think it was fifteen, sixteen minutes, something like that. I know he had a clock running.
Fifteen thirty-seven?
Yeah, something like that.
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
To be exact.
We were in, we went into a shelter in place, which shelter in place, remember, means that students are, and they're allowed to still...
Right.
They're not hiding, they're, they should be teaching, talking, doing whatever, you just shouldn't be going out in the hallway. So they were in a shelter in place, it was probably a little longer for that, I think it was probably maybe thirty minutes by the time we were able to, to, you know, get the shelter in place, bring the dogs in, do it, have a quick debrief and get, get out of here. But overall, as I said, it was pretty, it was a pretty neat process, and I'd say it was, you know, our intent of that is to, you know, collaborate with them, so that they get their, they get their training process, but we also get some information about, you know, are there, are there drugs in this building, right, that we would be able to easily find. I think that based on today, I mean, it was, it was pretty positive that the, you know, they're really, in the areas that they searched, there were no positive hits. So I think that that was, that was good. But I hope that at least it does get the awareness out that, you know, we're building this relationship with them, and they were great to work with, and hopefully we'll be able to work with them again in the future.
Thank you for the update.
So when the dogs come in, do they bring them to certain spots to check, or would the dog be able to know that there was drugs in a locker on the second floor? You know what I mean?
Yeah, so they do, so it's kind of neat the way the handler will kind of almost like point to an area, and then the dog sort of knows to kind of go and like sniff along that area. So we actually, the way they did it, they, you know, said they were pretty well orchestrated, they had the map of the school, and they knew like, okay, the first unit was coming in, they're going to this corner, the next unit's coming in, everyone's going in a clock, because the big thing is they don't, they try to keep the dogs from seeing each other, because if they see each other, then they can get a little distracted. So they kind of go, you know, go around, so they checked all the lockers. Every, every team that came in was, there was a state police handler with the dog, there was a Clinton police representative as well, and there was a school representative with each group, so that we could try to just kind of go through, and, and so, so we did all the, all like the common areas, the lockers in the hallway, the bathrooms, we did some classrooms, not every classroom, pretty much, you vacate the classroom, and then they go through the classroom, and they might check the students' belongings in there, and the, or whatever's, you know, left, left behind in the classroom. The restrooms, locker room, they did like the library, this common areas and those types of things, too. So, like I said, it was, it was good, and it was, you know, I think hopefully that we'll be able to continue our partnership, and I hope that the, you know...
It's a great partnership.
The goal, and the goal is, sorry, and the goal is, I don't ever want to catch anybody, because I want that to mean that, you know, it's not here, so.
I hope it's a win-win.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Let's have an update from the great work happening at the marketing committee.
We actually haven't met since our last meeting, but we do need to schedule a February meeting, which we hope to do before our next meeting on the twenty-fourth, so. I'll get something scheduled.
The newsletters look terrific.
Yeah, we had some feedback, you had, you had a...
Yeah, I put that in there.
Of the open rates and it shows, I think we improved a little bit from the December to the January one.
That's okay, I mean, we have it in our packets, you know?
Yeah, the email campaign.
Unless there are questions about it, don't...
Yep, okay.
And I at least tried to show, I mean, I kind of broke it up to make it a little more user-friendly, but I thought it was important to keep the unsubscribe rate there, too, which is at least a bonus, at least it goes to show that people aren't getting it and saying, take me off this list, that's good. You know, so you can kind of see that, and I think the, it was pretty, you know, it was fairly consistent, and I think like we said before, the other thing that's good to see is, it's fairly consistent across the various languages, too, which I think that's one of the things is, you know, it's fine if only fifty percent or sixty percent are reading it, but at least if they're, and also, it doesn't mean, you know, zero percent of our Spanish-speaking families or something like that, you know, so that's, I think that's good.
Okay. Under policy and procedures, you have in your packet, we, we reviewed the program of studies and changes to that. This is the policy.
The graduation...
It's about, yeah, I'm sorry, graduation promotion requirements, which is a part of, which is policy IKF. So it's about five or six pages from the back.
And we would do this kind of, I think we would do this one as a traditional, just I know sometimes we've brushed a couple of these, this should be a first reading, and then we would bring it up next for formal approval next, next meeting. It is pretty much a combination of the existing IKF and the current program of studies, and the policy advisory committee did review it earlier today.
And we're recommending that we approve it for a first reading tonight, and hopefully for an adoption our next meeting. Anyone like to make a motion?
I will.
Okay. Motion being made in second to accept policy IKF for a first reading tonight. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Also, there are, behind the policy IKF is MASC's newsletter on their advisory on policies, the I policies, and so the policy subcommittee will take up the I policies between now, well, hopefully between now and our next meeting, and have some...
Probably have revisions for the meeting after that.
Right.
Yeah, yep.
Right, so, and we may have a recommendation to remove, remove policies that are redundant as well, part of the process in going through, you know, the language and the new language is that it sometimes, you know, it invalidates existing policies that you may have, because it's duplicative, so. We'll give you more information when we get to that point.
Duplicative.
Duplicative. Use it three times, it's your word for it.
Kind of look it up.
Facilities.
Did you guys meet today with me?
We did not, we're not able to meet today.
Did I skip?
Okay. No, it's fine, but is, uh...
Oh.
He'll be right back.
Okay.
All right.
That's all right. Is there anything under our negotiation subcommittee?
So on the, I sent, it's the thirteenth, at I think like four o'clock, something along those lines. And Matt, just, and, and, I'll send you an email to confirm the location, because actually the reason why I wanted to do it that day is because we'll be at the town hall doing the, I'll be at the town hall as part of the facilities negotiations. So Wendy is the same union rep, so it's almost like, if you're in your office anyway, we might be able to do it right up there in like a conference room or something like that.
Terrific, love to entertain.
Yeah, exactly. So I'll just, I'll try to send you, it just doesn't make sense to come back down to my office if we're...
Four o'clock on the thirteenth, right?
Yeah, I believe so. And like I said, I'll try to keep you posted, and we'll go And I guess I'll try to keep you posted, and, uh, and we'll go from there, and then I don't know, and I'll, like I said, I'll reach out to you too, 'cause it might be something if that, if that other negotiation session goes shorter, if you guys are available, and I could send a text out, you guys wanna come down? 'Cause ours should be pretty quick, it's basically just ground rules and scheduling future dates.
Facilities. So, uh, we had a question about the, um, did the facilities committee, you, you didn't mean?
We did not.
Okay. So I would like to invite, uh, Director Carlstad up to, uh, up to the table, and, um, wonder if we could get a timeline.
Yeah, I know, I know the question came up at this meeting, uh, I think, or one of our last meetings about the roof timeline, and really making sure that we wanna make sure we don't miss that spring window, and that we felt it's really important, um, to get the project done before the next town meeting, right? I mean, you have a town meeting, you don't wanna be back at the town meeting saying, we need this, and then you haven't even done that, right? So, um, so I know we checked in a couple of times, I don't know if you wanna give us an update on where we stand?
Yeah, we got, the RFP is complete, just getting reviewed one more time at town hall. And, um, basically, I'm looking for bids submitted on March twenty-fifth, with a, uh, start date of as soon as possible after that point.
So what does the timeline look like, uh, in practical terms? What does it look like? What's the turnaround time between the bid proposals, choosing the, you know, I'm assuming the lowest bid or lowest qualified bid, and then, what, what does that timeline typically look like?
So, um, currently, the proposals are due on March twenty-fifth.
Okay.
So then it'll be a, um-
Do you have a date to review those proposals?
April thirteenth is for notice and recommendations of awards to the school committee, I just have to verify the school committee meeting date.
Mary, are we meeting on the thirteenth? Or somewhere around the thirteenth? Do you, you meant the week of the thirteenth?
It's a Monday, it's a Monday.
The week of the thirteenth.
It's a Monday, yeah, it's a Monday. 'Cause the twelfth is Easter, Sunday, April twelfth is Easter this year. I just happened to look it up today.
I would guess we're meeting the thirteenth, because, only because I think the twentieth, I think that next week is, is April vacation, so we're probably meeting before and after that, but-
I, I was either thirteenth or the week prior, I, you know, I, I just have to double check on that, so. With, uh, proposals being, uh, dropped off on the twenty-fifth, we'll evaluate them on the twenty-fifth.
The only, and the only other thing I'd add, Russ, and I know that we need to, is, um, we probably wanna talk to Chris McGowan and make sure that the building committee has a meeting already scheduled in advance, so we can review that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, we have to rule that, that's why there's a longer timeframe, that's why it's March twenty-fifth to April thirteenth, so we can get a building committee, uh, meeting scheduled in at that point. 'Cause they do have to review everything we do over fifty K.
Over fifty thousand, yep.
So.
So who needs to have that meeting first? The school committee or the building committee?
We're gonna go through the building committee first, and we'll bring it to you guys on the thirteenth, and, um, I'm-
I'd actually have to double check, I don't even know if they need to bring it to us. I think, uh, it'd be more of a courtesy, but I think if, if the building committee recommends it and they go for it, yeah.
If waiting for us gets in the way of getting it done, then I think I speak for the board, I'm fine with, like, let's get it done.
All right, that's good.
Thanks, I'm a, I'm, you know, I'm a, I'm a member of the, the building committee, and, um, so I would be on there, and then, and that's the building committee, like I said, any project, whether it's Vale Street or the central office doors or whatever, any of those, they review the bids and make the recommendation, and then, uh, we go from there, so. We might be able to, like I said, not, not have to wait for the, uh, that school committee meeting, if we can try to schedule, you know, basically, if we can open bids on the twenty-fifth, can we have a meeting the twenty-sixth or something like that with, with the-
Well, we have to do diligence after we open the bids, we have to check references and such, we can't just-
And that's the timeframe between the twenty-fifth and the thirteenth, correct?
Right.
That's what, that's the activity that happens there, 'cause you're gonna reward it on the thirteenth.
Right.
Do we know what town meetings date is?
It's gonna be like June tenth or something, or June third, and it's like the first.
First Monday in June.
Yeah.
So that gives us between April thirteenth and June tenth.
Yeah, and I have it, I have it written down too, it has to be completed, and we stretch it out to by June first completion.
Yeah, I think June first, I think is, would be town meeting, right, this year? And then June eighth would be election.
So, that's, that's the basic footprint of the timeline.
And that, that date of June first is outlined in the RFP for anybody who were to accept it.
Correct. That's a drop dead date.
Is that a, is that a doable date? Do we have enough time to get it done?
It's a three-day project, it's just to find a couple of days dry out, a couple of days come in, do your prep, lay it out, and get it done, it's a three, maybe a four-day project.
As long as it's the RFP that is such, like, they would, couldn't even, you know, if they're gonna respond to it, they would have to figure that out, I would hope.
Well, or we'd have to build, we'd, they'd have to pay a financial penalty or something for going on, yeah.
That's the good part about it.
Yeah, I just, you know, not knowing the scope of the work, I didn't want the process to get in the way of making the RFP unrealistic. But if it's a three to four day job and-
Yes, it's, it's, it's really, they cut the roof and that stuff gets rolled off, it's the same process we did last year with that two, two to three thousand square feet we covered.
So are you gonna be working with, are you working with Mike as the chief procurement officer to try to get that?
Mike's gonna review it, and then he'll get it sent out to the, he'll get it advertised and onto the register and advertise locally, 'cause he's a procurement officer.
So is, is there a date for the review and a date for the posting?
Yeah, the posting is, um, I'm assuming right now, posting is gonna be, um, February twentieth, 'cause I gave, have to give him time to review it.
And it does, it just takes, I mean, just from the couple bids we just did recently, it takes a time, it, there's like a lag of getting it from even the day you submit it till it gets posted on the-
It's a two or three day lag sometimes, then we have to build time into it, so we build time into it. We have a site visit scheduled for March seventeenth at ten o'clock, mandatory site visit. Twenty-one who wants a job bad enough is gonna come to the site visit. No flyby nights. And March eighteenth is the last day for our, our request for information.
So how confident do we feel that it's gonna fall within the budget that we voted on at town meeting in order to do the job?
I'm still confident. You know, and since we did some of the work last year, if we have to cut some square footage out, we can cut out the stuff and not recoat the things we did last year. So that's some money savings there.
So is this a whole new roof? Like, you've confused me by saying recoating and, we're, we're getting a whole new roof.
This is a fluid, fluid applied roofing restoration, this is a fluid applied product, it's a rubber, it's a liquid rubber that goes over the existing rubber roof.
So it's not a tear off and rebuild, it's gonna, it's like a new coat, it'd be a whole new coating, but it's not, the intent is not to do just patches, the idea was to try to do one continuous as best we can, yeah.
And how much is this?
Well, we have six hundred and forty thousand dollars aside for it. A new roof would cost about two and a half million today.
So if everything goes as it's supposed to go, when will it stop raining inside the school?
I know. Um, March twentieth. It'll be sealed up tight as a drum right, right then. And, uh, this also has a five-year warranty, and if we continue with the inspections, which are part of the contract, the warranty stretches out to ten years. So we have, um, you know-
Is there any, is there any, I know it's been, I mean, I know like, the, the leak just spread over the weekend, and I'm sure that's probably partly related to some like, ice dams and then the rain, but-
We tried to chase it down, think we could get ahead of it, and fix the problem, but, you know, we're trying to save the money for the town. But we got new leaks, we still got, the leaks that come through from where they put the AC system in is the big problem.
Are there any sort of stopgaps that we could try to do now?
Yeah, once it dries up, we can go pour some more, stick them in there, um, see if that'll do it, otherwise it's a physical alteration on the roof.
I mean, I think the only challenge there is, at the end of the day, the, the clear communication to the, to the teachers at least, would have to be that, you know, the impact to them is gonna be minimal, because if it's June first, school year's out two weeks later. Roof gets done June first.
Before June first.
Then, so I mean, I, I think anything we can do to bring that June first date in as aggressively as possible, I think we should take that into consideration as the requests are coming back. So if we're getting three bids, and someone says, listen, I'm not as busy as such and such company as you're, as you're evaluating the three, and someone says, I can be there next week, and it's a three-day process, I think we need, in the rubric of the RFP, we need to consider that.
One of the, one of the high priority factors will also be the ability to complete the job in a timely manner, yeah.
I mean, you gotta balance it, but you know what I'm saying, like, 'cause, you may have the best company that says, I can't get it done on June first, you may have a second prior company you might have to do a couple different, a couple additional references on, but can be here in two weeks. I mean, most good roofing companies are probably not sitting waiting on their hands saying, I, I can be there tomorrow, so.
But I'd also say, you know, I think that, um, the concerns are valid, that e, even, whether we're talking April, or we're talking May, or we're talking by June first, you know, it's only February, so next time we get something, next time it dries out a little bit and we get someone up on that roof, we need to start trying to, to Band-Aid whatever we can, and that's, you know.
We're, we're just camped by whatever's on the roof right now.
Right, right.
And, you know, just to go to your point, um, there's an evaluation system that's built into the bid naturally, um, one through five, highly advantageous, or on the other end of the scale, we don't want you. So responding to the, to the RFP, the ones who respond with an earlier timeframe, they will score higher, so they will automatically pump to the top of the list. So it's, it's a lowest qualified bid, it's not lowest bid.
Anything else for Director Carlstad? While we have you here, I just wanted to say, uh, to, we saw the article in the item, just thank you to all of the custodians for their efforts in battling, uh, flu and the science that, you know, the article that I read in the item, the, the science behind the, you know, trying to, you know, battle the, you know, just the disinfection, it, it's, it's pretty impressive, so.
We have to do it, you know, I don't know, I haven't tracked them tightly, the absentee numbers, I get them every day. But we're running anywhere between five and seven, eight percent a day, which I think is pretty close to last year, which we also did the disinfection, but I don't have any data before that.
Yeah, I mean, I just know, like I said, I haven't done like daily, daily counts right now, but I know that we haven't had any scenarios when you look at our attendance reports, that's like, you know, I know there were some surrounding schools where they were contemplating like canceled school for the day, because they had, you know, over fifty percent absentee rates and all that kinda stuff, so. You know, we haven't been hit that hard, and, and I feel, and that's, that's pretty much what I said in the article, you know, it's like, it's almost, I don't really have a great quote for you, because it really hasn't hit us that, that hard, that we've noticed, I'm not saying there's not, there aren't kids are sick, it's, yeah. It's winter, kids get sick all the time, you know, and I think all of us were talking earlier about, we've often been sick at some point in the last two weeks, yeah.
That, that the efforts have been made to use the technology that's available and to stay on top of it, and it's appreciated.
We were provided the same technology at the senior center, and we've been doing very well as well.
In, in my industry, you know, right now, the way that a lot of the districts are eleven, twelve percent absenteeism, so we're lower, running lower than that, so I'm, I think it's working, and it's inert, and it's, um, you know, it's not gonna hurt anybody.
Great. Anything under old business? Anything under new business? Is there any public comment from, to this point, there is not? All right, can we have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Thank you, we stand adjourned. Good night, everyone, happy Valentine's Day.